All right, I'll call this April 17th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting to order at 6:32. And first we'll do a roll call. Sayed Safavian. Rajesh Chakrapani.
Here.
Bachmann?
Here.
I'm Mike Brusco here. We expect Suda to be here soon, and we know that Hisham is running about 30 minutes late. Chair Bachmann has an excused absence this evening. So we've got roll done. Are there any changes anybody would like to suggest for the agenda this evening? Seeing none, we'll call the agenda approved by common consent, and then approval of the minutes from our April 3rd, 2025 regular meeting. Any changes to the minutes? Okay, seeing none, we'll call the minutes approved by common consent. And next on the agenda are public comments. These are public comments that are not related to the business that we have this evening, which includes a public hearing on amendments to the code Title 21. So if you have public comments that are other than to the SMC Title 21 code, you have three minutes. Who'd like to speak first?
James Eastman, Eastlake Semamish Parkway. A fairly curious individual, and getting ready for this meeting, I decided I was going to start looking at what's coming through the pipeline development-wise. And I pulled up probably five or six plots, and I noticed that in four out of five, that all the plots I pulled up, none of them were submitting for their density allocation. I attended that, I think it's North Point, or the short, they're the subdivision plot that just got approved by the hearing examiner. That's kind of what got me going was, they're allowed 18 units of density, but they only used 12. I thought, man, that's strange. Shouldn't they have value in the density? So I started pulling up every single plot over the last five years till about we changed development regulations between one and two, and then to what we have now. And it was that way across the board. And I found this one subdivision in particular, the Bright Carrier Plot, which is on Southeast Fourth there, where they've, just right next to town center. And that subdivision, I believe, was allowed 18 units of density, and they only did 10. I thought, hmm, that's really interesting. Like, what's the difference? Then I went quarter mile away to a very similar location, the Carrier subdivision, which was done under Development regs Phase 1, and that had 36 that was allowed, and they built 36. So clearly in my mind, it's like, okay, like Development regs, Phase 1 and 2. And I think Paul and I both said this when he passed it, they were going to take the city from an R6 to an R4, or from an R4 to an R3. And I think if you created an Excel sheet, you would end up at R3. So the, created this glass ceiling with those updates, we haven't rolled some of those things back as part of this comp plan update and as part of middle housing. So I'm not sure if we're going to break through that glass ceiling or not to get above an R3 on our zoning. I don't know if this middle housing will do that. Some things that concern me are, if we are going to do middle housing and we can't mass clear and grade, you're trying to fit 12 houses on an acre, but you're having to come back and dig out each one, like, in this very tight space. So that would be one that you should incentivize right away. Second is review times. I think maybe that Nor, or that Bright subdivision, they wanted a short plot because they go through way faster than a long plot. And then there's a few other things that we can do to utilize our land more efficiently. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mike is on and ready. Okay, thanks. Paul Stickney, Semamish. I sent you a non-agenda comment today of what I sent City Council, which was the fifth of five, you know, verbal comments I gave over roughly a nine or 10-day period, that in sequence make, not the case, but sort of discuss an overview of what's been going on with what I've been proposing the last year or two, which is to meet a different set of target numbers in our comp plan tied to citywide housing imbalance that are not tied to the, you know, growth target. Gave out jelly beans because I gave all the other commissioners those. And I talked to them about it tying to Ronald Reagan, which is to trust but verify this information. Today, in the email I sent, I mentioned I would give sort of a simplist, clear simplicities. I have a few topics to talk about. Don't have time for tons, but some of them. What I've been talking about isn't meeting all needs in the region. That's a regional target. Semamish keeps its regional target low, which I support. What I've been talking about is meeting some needs for the internal makeup of our community, economic and, you know, workforce and demographic needs. That's not in our comp plan. I've been suggesting that we add that to the comp plan. The next piece, let me see which one I want to talk about. Yes, I was talking in these five articles about adding 5,000 B and C units for market-rate housing alongside A. And I'm not going to repeat everything. I will just say that doing that would equal a single-family equivalent of roughly 1,700 to 1,800 houses, which is about a four-to-one ratio on traffic, and is about a third of the growth our community is seeing. And that would meet about 70% of our needs, which I've outlined. I'm not going to go over that. A couple pieces that I haven't chatted about, and the others may have to wait for another meeting, is I suggest that you really read the comp plan. I appreciate what community development has said, that it can be flexible, that, you know, growth targets aren't necessarily minimums or maximums. But yet, when I read the comp plan, if I didn't attend any of these meetings, I would never see that anywhere. And it would be crystal clear that it was aiming for 2,100 affordable. I think we need to change some of the language so the general public knows this.
Thank you, Paul. Anybody else? Please state your name when you're up there.
Wrong piece of paper. Hello, everyone. My name is Tim Gray. I'm a longtime resident of Semamish for 42 years. First time here to these meetings. I moved here before any traffic lights existed, back when 228th was actually closed due to a slide, and there was no plans to open it at the time. Crazy to think of that now. Anyways, I'm here tonight to share some concerns and opinions that I have around the movement to create affordable housing in Semamish. And my topic tonight is specifically in regards to the method proposed to fund this activity. So as I understand it, when a new subdivision is being built, 10% of these new homes must be, must meet affordable housing standards. This means 10% of these homes must be built and sold at a substantial loss. Alternatively, as I understand it, there's a fee-in-lu option, where you can pay roughly $35 a foot to, for every home being built in lieu of building the affordable homes. Both of these approaches add a very significant cost to the bottom line for any development. The added cost obviously has to come from somewhere. Unfortunately, as it stands, this added cost is ultimately going to come from the landowner, not from the developer. Developers will simply go elsewhere to develop if they cannot meet their profit margins here. It's just a reality. This economic pressure directly affects land values and ultimately impacts landowners such as myself. Assuming developers will shoulder this cost is shortsighted. Passing the added cost on to the end consumer simply raises home prices, which is in direct conflict with affordability. This only leaves the landowner to shoulder these added costs, and it's simply not fair that landowners single-handedly bear the burden of these significant costs. They're big numbers. So in my opinion, if we stay on the current path to funding affordable housing, I suspect what's going to ultimately happen is developers are going to continue to leave the area and do business elsewhere. There's a lot of places they can build. The reality is Semamish needs developers more than developers need Semamish. And if Semamish, if growth of any housing type is truly the goal of the city and the community, it seems we have opposing things here. So I ask the council to explore other means to fund affordable housing effort. Don't assume developers will absorb it because they won't. And don't expect individual landowners to shoulder it. It's just simply not fair. If building affordable housing is truly the desire of the city and its community, then it's only fair that the cost be shared on a more widespread basis. In closing, and for the record, I am not, nor have I ever been affiliated with a developer or a builder or any affiliates in any way. I am simply a retired, longtime landowner, resident, and taxpayer of Semamish. And in closing, I thank you all for all you do to try to balance this challenging reality of growth. You guys have a hard job. Thank you.
And thank you. Anybody else? You can make comments.
Hello, everyone. My name is Colin Molsum, and I'm addressing you today regarding the planned short-plot development at 19641 Southeast 24th Way. Community Development Director David Pyle was kind enough to speak with my, about my concerns, specifically in relation to the city's mandatory affordable housing program outlined in Chapter 2110 of the Semamish Code. When I asked David what I could do, he advised me to speak here in front of you guys today to express my concerns. My main concern involves the application of Section 2110-030 general requirements, which states at least 10% of the units in new housing developments in the area specified in SMC 2110-020 must be affordable to households earning up to 80% AMI adjusted for household size. Respectfully, I am asking for clarification on how this requirement is intended to apply to a short plot creating a single-family lot. Given the undivisible nature of a single-dwelling unit, it is unclear how one practically constructs 10% of a single-family home to meet this requirement. I have no problem with 10% of 10 lots or one affordable unit or in-lu fee. However, charging the same amount for a fractional portion, for example, .1 or .2 of a unit makes no sense and unfairly burdens me with a disproportionate amount. Furthermore, my primary concern centers on the new required affordable housing in-lu fee associated with the short plot. As a lifelong Semamish resident who intends to build my own home on our family's land and remain an active community member, this fee presents a significant and, in my view, unfair financial disadvantage. Why should I have to subsidize housing for someone else? I go to work every day and work hard, just like everybody else and everyone here, and nobody is subsidizing the cost of building my home. It seems counterintuitive that a lifelong resident contributing to Semamish by building here would bear a large financial burden for others' housing. This projected cost severely impedes my ability to realize my long-term goal of building my house and raising my family soon, which will likely force me to relocate outside of Semamish, the community I have always called home. Thank you for your time and consideration.
And thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, we have one hand raised online. Kevin, I am switching you over to panelists.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. All right. Good evening, Planning Commission members. I am Kevin Schmuller, and I've lived in Semamish for the past 10 years. I'm here tonight to surface a concern that's come up during our project guidance reviews with the city's development team. I surfaced this during the City Council meeting on Tuesday earlier this week, and wanted to share that here as well. For years, we had dreamed of building a house in the local area that could accommodate our family over time and properly accommodate for medical conditions and disabilities of our parents and other family members. We found the perfect property, a 3.68-acre lot zoned R1 on the north side of Rock Meadow, which we purchased in October 2024. Our intent was to rebuild a home where the existing single-family residence is located for our family. Due to the disabilities already mentioned, our goal is to build a home that can accommodate walkers and wheelchairs. But during project guidance reviews, we found that as of January 1st, 2025, there is now a maximum building footprint of 3,000 square feet, which is located in the Semamish Development Code, Chapter 21, Tac 04, Tac 30, on district standards, density, and dimensions. There is not a way to fit a house for our family of five-plus parents and our family members on a single level with an attached garage within the 3,000-square-foot maximum building footprint requirement. Additionally, there are no exemptions or footnotes for this new code requirement. The workaround for the current code is to construct several multi-story buildings that are all less than the 3,000-square-foot building footprint maximum. This would require an elevator. Not only does this create safety concerns, but it also adds additional installation and maintenance costs. The only remaining option for a single-family home is the narrowly-construed variance process, which is the comment that a city planner made in a review, which would end up adding more cost than time to the project and unknown response to the city, as we are currently working on this process. Affordable housing is important, and we're on board with prioritizing that for the city as a core theme. But blanket regulations of 3,000-square-foot building footprints across all zoning districts without any exemption criteria is not the proper method to achieve the intent. I request the Planning Commission consider updating this 3,000-square-foot max building footprint code to properly consider educations, edgewise, such as ours and others, as well as consider alternatives to a building footprint limitation that both promote affordable housing while also ensuring homeowners have flexibility to design and build homes that meet their unique needs and situations. In the near term, we're scheduling a follow-up meeting with the planning team to review our situation and variability, or the viability of a variance request before we spend the time and money in both fees and additional design work and rework that are required to do this process. Thank you for your time.
And Kevin, thank you. Okay. Anybody else online? Okay. So thank you for all of your comments, everyone. Next, we'll go to presentation for this evening and discussion about the code changes. So Evan?
Great. Thank you, Vice Chair Brusco, Planning Commission. Tonight, we are continuing work we started at a workshop on March 3rd. This is part of a docket request the city submitted late last year. Knowing that with all the code updates we're making around the adoption of the comprehensive plan, we would need to come back and clean some things up. We considered these ultimately fairly minor code amendments, but ones that we wanted to talk through with you and get input on, which we started on March 6. And tonight, we're returning with red-line code language and those updates for your consideration for recommendation to the City Council. They're slated to have a workshop on May 6 and consider these for adoption on May 20. So I'll just go ahead and dig in here. There are varying levels of complexity of the issues, and we're starting out really light. So the code issue we're identifying, that was identified here, is that there are a couple missing definitions in 2104OB. That's the general definition section for the Development Code. And we were missing a definition for a hedge. And the proposed amendment, which you would, which you'd see in Exhibit 1, was to add the definition of a hedge is a row of five or more trees of the same species densely planted to provide a landscape barrier or screen maintained with ongoing pruning or shearing. The next definition that was missing from the section was of area median income, and this is important because this is used to determine levels of affordability. And the amendment here is to add that definition, which specifies that area median income is based on the housing and urban development data, and that should HUD no longer produce that data, the city is able to produce its own method for determining area median income. The next issue gets a little bit more complicated. So this one is around the final approval of subdivision. And currently, the code gives the final approval authority to the City Council. And this ends up proving a bit of an issue because it gives the impression that at the point of final approval of a subdivision, that there are some discretionary actions the council may take, when in truth, ultimately, it's a ministerial step that wraps up a years-long process of site planning, site improvements, preliminary approvals, conditions placed on the subdivision by the hearing examiner. And ultimately, all, once all that is completed and reviewed and inspected by the city and deemed complete, the project comes in for final approval and for issuing a plat map with the recording office with the county. So that's the step we're looking at here, is that very end of the process. And what we're recommending is that instead of it going in front of the City Council, where really, they, they don't have a lot of options, but to move it forward, because, again, we've been through years-long process, and all the requires, requirements have been met. Instead, we suggest that it's a hearing examiner approval. And this also makes sense because the hearing examiner is the, the one who does the preliminary approval process and understands the project, and also has placed conditions on the subdivision, which at this point have been met. So here's just a cite, a reference to changes in state law in 2017 that give the city the authority to kind of outsource this final approval process to a different body. And again, we're recommending that be the hearing examiner. And the changes you'd see in Exhibit 2, both swap City Council for the hearing examiner for the approval, and we've also added language that clarifies how the final approval processes work. Currently, it's just captured in one paragraph, and it's a little confusing because a short subdivision has a different approval process than a subdivision. A short subdivision is approved in-house by the department, where a subdivision is approved by the City Council, but we're recommending through the hearing examiner. So in the red-line edits, you'll see that we've clarified that there's a difference in the two processes, and recommend that change to the hearing examiner. And I don't, I can move through them all as one, and then we can come back to questions, or we could stop along the way, whatever. If, I'll keep going.
If you all have a preference, continue through, and then take, take notes, and we'll come back.
Okay. Yeah, sure. Okay. The third here was clarifying one of our development standard tools, and that's a tool to, for building height measurement. The current code is confusing and a little difficult to administer. It becomes a bit unclear which method of measurement you use and where you measure from. For example, I believe it's from, it specifies now measuring from the crown of the street, and it creates a very un-uniform way of determining building height. So the amendments you'll see in Exhibit 3 create, replace the more confusing crown of the road method with a, what I think is a fairly industry-standard method of creating a single-plane measurement method that uses the average existing grade of each wall segment, and then creates a average, an average existing plane, grade plane, that is used to determine, to measure from for the height of the building. So it would simplify that first measurement pretty greatly. The second issue you'll find is actually in the same section, and it has to do, to clarify what a sidewall is. And this was an issue, it reads currently that a sidewall will be no more than 24 feet high, but it doesn't specify exactly when that applies. And what the amendment, the amendment here that we're recommending is clarifying that a sidewall is generally parallel to a side lot line, and is located closer than two feet to a five-foot side yard setback, or four feet to any larger side yard setback. So it specifies in what instances that 24-foot height maximum applies, and that's when you're within this, these distances to the setbacks. The next tool is to clarify when a fence and a retaining wall or rockery would be measured together or independently. So think of this as you, the edge of a property has a retaining wall, and somebody wants to put a fence on top of it. The maximum height of both of those combined, I think, is 12 feet. But if measured independently, the maximum height of a retaining wall can be eight feet, and a fence can be six feet, which totals to 14 feet. So we need to clarify when those would be measured together and independently. And the proposed amendment here is that fences are And the proposed amendment here is that fences are measured independently from retaining walls if there is a minimum of two feet of plantable space from the, the back of the retaining wall. So, if that fence is set back two feet or more of plantable space, you can put shrubs and veggies there, then it can be measured independently, and you can reach that higher height. But if that space doesn't exist, then it's, it, the, the lower height limit applies. Yes, the next one, this comes from the Washington State Department of Commerce, and they reviewed our development regulations with the updated comp plan, but unfortunately provided us comments kind of just after the, we crossed the finish line. And they, they raised concerns about the, the restrictions that we'd placed on the occupancy and locations of permanent supportive housing and emergency shelters. We have to show that we have capacity for 401 beds, 401 emergency beds and 499 permanent supportive housing units. And they said that the regulations that we had in place, which I have here in this table, of the occupancy restrictions of no more than, than 10 persons in a permanent supportive housing unit, or no more than 50 in a shelter, along with the spacing requirements of no facilities within a mile of each other or a half-mile of each other, would effectively kill the ability for the city to show capacity if these, these properties were built, if these, these facilities were built. So, staff made a recommendation to the, the commission on March 6th that we get rid of both the occupancy and spacing requirements, and the commission provided feedback that, yes, it makes sense to reduce the, to remove the occupancy requirements, but instead of eliminating the spacing requirements entirely, reducing it down to no, no units or facilities could be within a quarter-mile of each other. And David and I spent some time looking at the bonus parcels, which, again, you'll remember those are the religious or municipally-owned parcels that we allow extra density on for the sighting of, you know, very low affordability units. And it seems like, it seems like this quarter-mile radius would allow us to, if these, if these facilities were built, still demonstrate we have capacity in the remaining available bonus parcels. So, we think this is a, a safe approach that we can use to demonstrate that we have capacity. So, next, we turn to Chapter 2110, the affordable housing chapter. There are a couple things that we wanted to address here. First, the first batch of things were really just cleaning up the code section. There were some, there was some repetitive language, like applicability was stated twice, and the afforded, the affordability requirements were stated twice. Some things were in the wrong sections, and the calculation method was needed, needed clarifying. So, we proposed, obviously, to remove the redundancies. We move all the fee and lieu requirements under a fee and lieu management section, which we call it now. We correct the square footage calculation to clarify that it's based on the total floor area of all eligible, all eligible units for fee and lieu. We also add a definition in this chapter alone for total floor area as all habitable living space measured from exterior walls. And then, we clarify when there are alternate, when whole-unit alternative compliance methods may be used. The next round of amendments come from a request directly from city council earlier this year. They, they have been hearing feedback around the exemption criteria and wanted the commission to take another crack at, at looking if, looking at if 1,000 square feet is big enough, is big enough, or if we should consider a larger square-footage exemption from the requirements of this chapter. They also wanted the commission to consider, you know, should, should this chapter apply for instances of homes being rebuilt? They also tasked the commission with considering if the .5 roundup to one whole unit was appropriate, or if we should just get rid of rounding. And we, I think this is a leftover question of how, should additions be considered? Additions don't really apply here because these are for new, new housing developments. So, the proposed amendments are based on the conversations that we had with you all on March 6th, and from feedback we've heard from folks like the master builders, that 1,500 square, square feet feels like a more appropriate exemption. Exempting homes that are being rebuilt is appropriate, and this would be cases of, you know, loss through an act of God, or even instances where folks just choose to tear down and rebuild. And we also remove the rounding requirements and clarify how the number of required affordable units are determined, and that whole number of units must build a unit on-site, and that all fractional units must, must either pay a fee and lieu to meet the requirements, or should they choose, they could build a, a whole unit on-site. And lastly, this is a more simple one. Currently, there's existing language in 2104, oh-three-oh for density calculations that use, uses a now outdated meth, method of calculation, uses, which is lot coverage. Additionally, this section needed to clarify that it was a floor area calculation for, it was for commercial floor area. So, the edits you'll find in Exhibit 7 simply remove the outdated method for calculation of lot coverage, and then add the word "commercial" to floor area to specify that's, that's what's being calculated. So, that's it as far as the, the slide deck goes. David has a, added?
Yeah, if you could go back to the slide about the, the language about net floor area, or, or whatever, whichever one, whatever we're saying, whatever the term is, I always get it confused, I apologize. So, we agreed with some of the comments that we'd received in writing from Mr. Stickney, and we have since republished the packet to incorporate those in there. There was a couple typos that we noted in there that Mr. Stickney picked up, so we do appreciate his comment on that. And that, in fact, we meant, it's just the...
That's the fourth bullet.
Fourth bullet. Habitual, yeah, total floor area. So, we, the, the code uses multiple terms to calculate area for different purposes. So, one thing to keep in mind is that this is really specifically intended to be used in this subsection with regard to calculating the in lieu fee related to the inclusionary affordable housing requirement. So, this definition is specific to this section. Just wanted to, to highlight that there was a typo in the previous draft that was forwarded, and Mr. Stickney identified that. We appreciate that, and we have since corrected that and republished the packet.
Okay, you've got the, you'll put the last slide up. So, here's the process that we'll go through and, and what we'll want to accomplish. So, we've gone through the, the seven separate exhibits, all the major changes have been summarized. What we'll do is we want to, you know, make sure that if there's any questions for clarifications, that we do that now before the public hearing. And, and so, I would just go through any questions around Exhibit 1, Exhibit 2, so forth. Then we'll do the public hearing, and then we'll debate. And our task during the debate is to make motion, if need be, amendments to the motion. What's suggested up here is if we like and see no changes needed for, say, Exhibits 2, 3, 4, 5, that we would group those together and say, motion to accept those exhibits as presented. And then, anything else, let's say there's a change to Exhibit 1, we would make a motion to pass that, and then make the necessary amendment to that motion. So, there's several steps to go in through here, the first of which is to work through any clarifying questions that we have on the exhibits. And so, why don't we just start quickly with, anybody has a question around Exhibit 1? So, this was about definitions.
Right. If I remember the language correctly, it said a row of trees that are like a laurel. Is that a tree or a shrub? So, should it say trees and shrubs? Thanks.
Does that make sense? Anything, actually, I had that same, because if it was, if there was, my question would have been, is there a particular reason to limit to trees, which have, you know, one versus a lot of branches coming up closer to the ground, so?
I would only say that the reason why it's focused on trees is, is its application to the city's tree retention requirements. And this comes from, I want to say disagreement between neighbors around tree removal. And we have situations where one neighbor who might own a series of trees planted in a row that are Excelsis cedar or Leland cypress, that have been maintained like a hedge, that want to remove that, and another neighbor on the other side who doesn't own it, but who has benefited from the screening it has provided, and is taking issue with that and is filing code compliance case against that individual owner who is choosing to remove it. And sometimes can become quite heated between neighbors, and we are put in a position where we're having to make a call about whether it's a hedge or not, and we have no guidance or definition for that in our code.
Yeah. So, what I would say is we, after public hearing and debate, we'd need to decide if we should be clear about a hedge and a, with shrubs, because they can grow quite tall as well and have much the same issues, is what I would, how we want to debate that one. Okay, any other questions, comments about Exhibit 1, the definitions?
David, question about the definition of hedges. Generally speaking, correct me if I'm wrong, the purpose of hedges is either noise barrier or privacy. But in this definition, it doesn't say, if I plant a hedge that is going to take 15 years to reach the goal that I wanted to have, to provide either barrier for noise or barrier for privacy, is not going to do, is not going to serve the purpose. So, do we, is there any need, do you see any need to identify the, the initial height of the hedges? If the plant is only 12 inches, it's going to take, let's say, 20 years to reach the goal of providing privacy or noise barrier. Should that be a consideration?
So, this is not a, something that's an amenity that we require as a city. So, we don't require but for in the town center, where we have landscape standards, and some of our commercial zones, where we have landscape standards. But we still don't require hedges in those instances. There's a variety of ways that you can address screening and noise attenuation and light, light trespass and those kind of things. But in this case, this is really about something that someone put in at their own will, they didn't need a permit to plant it. We don't know, you know, it might have, property might have sold, and it's been maintained consistently or sporadically, but it has been maintained, and you can tell generally that it's been pruned a certain way. And somebody now, it's reached the end of its life cycle, or somebody doesn't like it and wants to reclaim that area on their property because they can consume quite a bit of space, and they want to remove it. And it's really about whether it's considered as a tree and regulated by our tree retention requirements, or whether it's some form of landscape feature, a hedge.
So, it is not a requirement, that's what I'm hearing.
It's not a requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? If not, let's move and see if there's any move to Exhibit 2, not make a motion around final subdivision. Any questions? Ashik?
Yeah, I have a question on Exhibit 2. Here, it is stated, the original thing was that the city council was the ministerial step that we were looking at, and now we are moving to the hearing examiner being the one. Does that still come back to the city council after the hearing examiner, or is the examiner the end of the process?
Correct, the examiner is the end of the process.
Okay. So, that was, should we spell that out, that the hearing examiner is the end of the process?
I think it reads clearly in the exhibit in the code, and I can take a look and pull it up if needed, but I think it, it's pretty clear when you're going through the sequence of the code that when you get there, it's done, because it then goes and gets recorded with the county.
Okay. So, it, maybe I did not read that clearly, and I, I was like, does this still come as a ministerial step to the city council, or it just ends with the hearing examiner? So, maybe I should go back and read that, but...
It, it says under Item G, proposed Item G, "Upon satisfactory review of a proposed final short subdivision confirming conformance to the conditions of the preliminary short subdivision approval, the department shall approve," oh, excuse me, wrong one, it's H. This is these two steps that we have. We have a short subdivision is done, review and approval, and signed by staff, and then it goes to be recorded. And then, the other one is H, apologies. "Upon satisfactory review of a proposed final subdivision, the department shall transmit a written recommendation to the city hearing examiner. The hearing examiner shall consider the department's recommendation and issue a final written approval decision confirming conformance of the final subdivision to the conditions of preliminary subdivision approval," which is what the examiner does. The examiner issued that, right? So, they're the best suited for that. And then, there's the last step, which applies both to subdivision and short subdivision that's listed here, is "Upon issuance of the final subdivision or final subdivision or final short subdivision approval, the accompanying final plat or final short plat document, which is the drawing, the map of the division, shall be recorded with the county records and elections division."
Got it. So, then, it basically takes out the step of the city council itself, because it goes straight to the county after the hearing examiner. That's how I'm reading it?
Yep.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
We, we would still likely take that to the city council as a, as a part of the city manager's report and let them know when we are finalizing subdivisions, just so they're aware of it.
But it's not the ministerial step that it used to be.
Right. That's what it would change to the hearing examiner.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So, the purpose of this change as far as the final authority of subdivision from moving from city council approval to hearing examiner, the purpose is to expedite the process, right? To make it easier for the applicant to go through the process?
It's to expedite the process, and it's also to remove the illusion of having some form of influence over a largely ceremonial procedure. There is a challenge where members of the community think that the city council, at the point of final subdivision, can do something different, but in reality, it's largely ceremonial. All the conditions have been met. Under state law, we have a very limited amount of time to take action and approve it. Really, where community members need to be involved and engaged is at the preliminary subdivision phase, which is where the hearing examiner holds a hearing and does a comprehensive review of the project and its compliance. So, what we're trying to do is to streamline the process, have the hearing examiner do this final review, because they're the one that did the preliminary subdivision and are most suited to do it. They're familiar with the project. They wrote the report on the, on the project. They're an independent auditor of city, of the city's work, right? So, they're, they're independent from the staff. They're hired directly by the city council, and the staff have a limited relationship with them as an independent authority, independent hearing authority.
But right now, under the city council as the final authority, they, they have the right to have public hearing. So, the public gets involved no matter which mythology you're using.
That, there is no public hearing under the current process.
Even with the city council?
Yeah, it's not a hearing. It simply has to be approved in a public meeting, which is different than a public hearing.
So, what is the implication of this change as far as the appeal process? If it is a city council, it can be appealed, right?
To Superior Court.
But if it is hearing examiner, that's the end of line?
To Superior Court.
I think this should be kind of noted, that's something that people should know.
It's the same appeal process, right?
No. If it is hearing examiner, that's the end of line. They can't, you cannot appeal hearing, hearing examiner's decision.
You could to Superior Court.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but it's no different if it was a hearing, hearing examiner or the city council approving it, the appeal route is to Superior Court.
Any other comments about Exhibit, we are on 2, right? Yeah, final subdivision. Okay, so, let's move to Exhibit 3, so height measurement. So, this is one that takes the average of the averages kinds of things. And I have no comment on that. Is anybody else? Sure.
I have a comment. I, I read it, and I'm really confused. If you have a, a piece of land that is basically includes a retaining wall as a part of it because of a, because of a great difference, but a part of the...
a grade difference, but a part of the, the lower part is also has a slope, and then we say that an average, using the average grade, so it's going to be average of the two?
So there's, yeah, there's, there's two different methods. Previously, there were multiple methods, and what we're trying to do is streamline it down to two simple, two methods that are simple to measure and are going to bring down the cost of applicant's background work, because the way it's currently set up, we're running into situations where builders, you know, homeowners who are building houses are having to have their surveyors do a lot of mental gymnastics, and it's costing them a lot of money. So what, what we're proposing is that we simply measure it, if it's a relatively flat lot, flatter than, do you remember what the change, six feet, that it simply sets a, exists, an average existing grade plane by using midpoint of segments, and, or, excuse me, midpoints of walls. So you could see here that if this was a structure and the lot only was mildly sloping, less than six feet across the structure, that you would then take each of the walls of the structure and take the midpoint of that wall and the, where it intersects the existing elevation of the ground, and you would then average that out. And that would give you your average existing grade plane, which is where you would then measure up for the purpose of building height. However, there's another method that I don't think we're proposing to change, right? That is, when it slopes more than six feet, you then break it into segments, and then you do individual grade planes for each segment. And the idea there is that we don't really want buildings that are on steep slopes measured across, or not on regulated steep slopes, but grades greater than six feet across the foundation. I want to be careful. We're not proposing building homes on steep slopes, because someone will run with that and comment on that. But we, we, we want to be careful about how we're measuring the height of homes on sites that have slopes that are greater than that six-foot limit, because that could result in a negative outcome to a property under downhill. It could result in a building being taller. What we want them to do is step down the roofline using building segments, and that's what this achieves.
Thank you. Anything else on height measurement? Okay, let's move to Exhibit 4, fence and rockery height. So this is a two-foot setback, right?
Quickly, there's Part 2 to Exhibit 3, which is a little confusing, but it's that sidewall height amendment as well. So I just wanted to pause here to see if anybody had questions about the clarification of when that sidewall height restriction kicks in.
Can you identify what a sidewall is?
Well, this is, that's exactly what this is trying to do, and it's saying that a sidewall and the height limit of 24 feet applies, a sidewall is generally parallel to the side lot line and is located closer than two feet to a five-foot yard setback or four feet to a larger setback. So a sidewall is a wall that falls within that zone, and it can only be limited, it can only be 24 feet in height.
So, yeah, we beat this one up pretty, pretty well at that meeting, last meeting. The idea is so that you don't end up with a maximum height of 32 feet, 35 feet, right next to a property line, that there's some diminishment or stepping, so you're not looking at a 30, 35-foot wall. Thank you. Other comments? All right. This is, the next one is Exhibit 5, state law alignment. I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, you added, thanks. It's good to have lots of eyes looking at these things. So, okay, so now we're back. So anything on the fence?
I have a question.
Anything on the fence? No pun.
So if there is a minimum of two feet of plantable space for the back of the retaining wall, plantable space for the back of, I mean, two feet of plantable space for the back of the retaining wall, I see a lot of homes which have a small wall with planting on top of that wall. How does this align with that? So I see, I see some homes where there are like, there is a small wall of about one to two feet, and there's planting down on top of that.
Yeah, I think, I think I understand what you're saying. What, I think we're saying, it's saying kind of the same thing. What this is trying to say is that if you have a six-inch bricks that make up that wall.
Yeah.
Right? And then there's plantings that happen here.
Exactly.
Behind that six inches of bricks, there needs to be two feet from the bottom of the fence for those two things to be measured independently.
Got it. Got it. Okay. So behind that, two feet?
Yep. So from the back, the back point of the wall, so again, six, six inches of bricks, if this is the front and this is the back where the soil is.
Got it.
And there needs to be two feet before you get to the base of the fence for those two to be measured independently.
Got it.
Yep.
Okay. So the back of that.
Of the retaining.
Took six inches to do it, but if they did it like a, if somebody did a foot-long one.
If it was, if it was big, big boulder rocks.
Yeah.
If it was a rockery or what, or berm.
Yeah.
Whatever the back point is of that, you know, the back of the boulders, there needs to be two additional feet until the base of the fence.
Okay. So for the berm, let's take the berm. That's a perfect example. Then that's two feet from the back of the berm to this thing, right?
Right. Yep.
Okay. Got it. That's great. Thank you.
Does it have to be plantable, or can it just be an empty piece? We're going to make it harder for people to plant it and maintain it, because very fast it's just going to be full of weeds and no one will be able to access it, and fall protection, and someone's going to fall and break their neck and.
That's fair. That, that could be a friendly amendment to this, that it removes the plantable requirement from that. I don't think we would object to that, and it would simplify its application greatly.
Thank you.
That's a great point, right? Because if it's, if it's not plantable space, what would we call that? It could be plantable space. It could not be plantable space. It could be plantable today. Five years from today, two bad summers and could become a non-plantable one.
It's called DMZ. Well, and on the DMZ, it would be possible, I think, in the spirit of this, if I've, if I've got rocks that get up to the height for the retaining wall, behind that I have a two-foot concrete, not even walkway. I mean, it's just concrete, because I don't want to plant anything. I don't want to maintain it. And then the fence, nobody's going to see that concrete. It's not going to be an eyesore. It saves the maintenance issue, and it meets the spirit of what I think we're trying to accomplish here, which is the issues around height, right? So, so that, an amendment might make sense around the plantable areas.
So this could be one that we could put in that bucket of amendments, right? So Exhibit 4, Item 4.
Can we just call it a setback and let whoever wants to do whatever decide on their own?
Absolutely. That they could choose to plant it, or they could choose to hard scrape it.
Put pavers or.
Yeah. Put pavers or put some form of art or something there.
Good comments. Okay. State law. All right. Looks like John has a comment.
It felt like we didn't have a lot of discretion on this one. You said that this comment came out in after we'd adopted. If we had not done the ability to open the comp plan for these adjustments, what would have happened? We wouldn't have been able to do anything until next year, or, I'm just being rhetorical, I guess.
Yeah, and I'll also add that, you know, the comment we, that we heard during the previous meeting on this was that we should really, you know, not just roll over and do what the state wants us to do on this, and that, you know, there are reasons to add precautionary measures for some of these types of uses that can be impactful to the community. And our analysis is, is that we have fairly extensive restrictions on permanent supportive housing in the code, and that the separation and occupancy numbers are just some of them. We have operational requirements that are quite extensive and that our legal counsel helped us craft that are.
Commerce and law.
That are just outside the boundary of what are considered legally allowed, or just within the boundary, I guess I should say, of what is considered legally allowed. But the challenge that we have is we have to show that we have capacity for a certain number of these types of units in the city. And when we have a combined limit on 10, 10-person occupancy for PSH, for permanent supportive housing facilities in a one-mile radius, it immediately starts to limit where these can go to a point where we cannot meet that capacity requirement. So what we're looking at is retaining the other requirements that we have that ensure the operational components will minimize impacts to the community, but removing the separation requirements or minimizing them down to a quarter mile for, was it for both or for just emergency? For both, right? So we still have a separation requirement, but it's just been reduced to something that allows us to be sure we have the capacity to meet state law.
First of all, David or Evan, did the half a mile or quarter a mile, is that a radius or linear distance?
It's radius from the.
I can, I can look at the statements. I can basically say that when you say walking distance, that's a linear.
Yeah, it's from a boundary of the parcel. So a half, a quarter mile measured is a radius from the boundary of the parcel. So you take the property lines and then measure a half or a quarter, so I keep saying half mile, quarter mile out from the, from every point of the boundary line to create a boundary.
But then when you say walking distance, which means.
Oh, I see. I, yeah, you know, I'm glad you brought that up, because I realized I didn't mention that in the, in the presentation. That was another one of those restrictions that were striking, because it would limit where these facilities could be cited, because not every one of our bonus parcels is located where, next to a transit stop.
Exactly. That's what I wanted.
Yeah, so we're, it struck from, that is one that we've also removed, and I'm glad you brought that up, because I forgot to mention in the presentation. So that, that walking distance one is struck, and we recommend.
Because right now, we have only, what, 220, it's a Holly Way. That's the only transit corridor. And the rest of the city, we don't have any bus stops, so this requirement doesn't apply there.
So we, we, let me go ahead and share screen here. I apologize, but I'm going to jump in here, Evan.
While he's pulling, he raised an important question about it being whether it's linear or the radius.
Can you stop sharing?
And if the city, if Sound Transit puts on a bus stop somewhere, does that change the?
If you look at linear, totally different story than if you look at radius.
Well, again, we're, we're just striking that requirement that it must be within a half-mile walking distance, whether it's as the crow flies or radius, it's just taken it off.
It's Item 5 here, and you can see we've changed it so that it says, "Facilities should be located within walking distance of a bus transit stop when feasible." And in part, this is because we have a changing dynamic up here around transit service.
Yeah.
And bus stops. And it's really hard for us to model out exactly where these would be feasible for our capacity right now. I'd love to say that we have lots of spaces available because of a very robust transit system and lots of stops, but that is simply not the truth right now. We have a shortage of meaningful transit. We're hearing that that's, those numbers are going to increase with the opening of the Marymore Station, and we're going to start to see some additional transit frequency. From the Sound Transit presentation at one of the recent council meetings, it's a good thing to watch, it's an update from Sound Transit. But we feel that this is a good place for us to land and that can help us influence where these go when we're working with social service providers who might want to put in an emergency housing facility in the city. Although I, again, have to say, we did say this at the last meeting, we have been working with the county and following very closely on their efforts to develop emergency and transitional housing facilities, and they have told us plainly that it simply does not pencil for them to locate an emergency housing facility or transitional housing facility in the city of Sammamish, and they do not see that happening anytime in the near or relative distant future, simply because of the cost dynamics that go along with it.
Yeah. So I really appreciate that you changed shall to should, because that makes it really clear. And I really appreciate that you added when feasible, because that can, that also changes the number of things. But I'm now worried that we took away the one-half mile walking dis, one-half mile walking distance into just walking distance, because that makes it very, very subjective. I, my walking distance could be very different from somebody else's walking distance, right? So why should we, why should we remove the one-half mile?
Friendly amendment could be to add it back in. I don't think we'd have a problem with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The only reason is because this kept it really specific and kept it very, to the point of that one-half mile. And if you take that off, it, it makes it very, very open and murky. So I, I'm totally fine with the remaining two that you added, but just the one-half mile, if you could bring it back.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else on the state law alignment? Now we have a possible amendment on that one. Okay, so now affordable housing. And I know there was a lot of discussion in May on that one, so I suspect there'll be some questions for this, and we'll have some discussion after public hearing. So, Sean, you want to go first? I read your mind.
I'll go first. And, and I know that this topic, we, we discussed it at least twice from before. So it's, it's not news to you. I, I completely object this, to this. And I completely disagree with any form of penalty or a tax to any citizen, any private citizen who is building a house for themselves. And like I said in the past, I know it would get me into the argument of, how do we know that she or he is building it for themselves? I trust them. I deal with honest people, and I trust our neighbors and fellow Sammamish residents that they're all honest people, and they say they're building it for their families. They are. Will there never be someone who will abuse it? Absolutely not. One of these days, there will be one who will abuse it. But I'm not going to penalize the majority just because of the one or two that will abuse it. Adding a 10% tax, that's, that's a big burden to, to someone who is limited on budget. People, they build them by themselves. And when we add a 10% penalty on that, it's just unfair. And also, limiting it to 1,500 square feet, I think we're not doing anyone any good. If I go today, I mean, not me, my kids are grown up. But if, like the, the guy who was back there, if he's building a new house and he's starting a family, 1,500 square feet, they, he would run out of space very fast. Once his kids, they start growing up, they become teenagers. You need a larger space. Anyone who's my age knows what I'm talking about. 1,500 square feet are not enough. If we have to put a limit, and again, I'm opposed to putting any limits. It's my property. It's my money. I earned it legally. I do whatever I want to do. But if we have to put a limit, I would go with at least 3,000 square feet, not 1,500. I might come back, but I'll let someone else take it.
That's a good start. Who's next? Why don't we go around?
Yeah.
I tend to agree. I tend to agree with Isham's position, but it's going to be a jump from 1,500 to the 3,000. I think that 3,000 maybe is a, a too high an exemption, and it probably would meet you somewhere close to 2,000 or so. somewhere close to 2,000 or so, or 2,200. Let me give an example. I bought a house, I'm in Sahali. When we bought the house, it was 2,200. We had four children grown into it, and it was fine, 2,200 fits that very well, we have enough room. Of course, all of the kids are on their own, but 3,000, Isham, that is too much of exemption. I'd probably go with it either 2,000 or 2,200. But I agree with Isham's position, 1,500 doesn't go anywhere as far as making exemptions.
Hoshin?
Yeah, I thought we beat this thing black and blue, but then, the more I read about it, the more I change. I think that 1,500 doesn't seem to be a number that can be supportable as we go for it. I live in a 2,000-square-feet home, and I'm looking to change it after, and my son has grown up now, but still, with all that, I'm still thinking about it. So even if I put myself to it, this seems to be something that I would not like and not support. And I agree with Isham, there are going to be people who are going to abuse it, but to base it on that, on the exception case rather than on the normal case is a little, a little too far. It's a bridge too far for me at this point in time, so I would, I would, I've now come, I've come to be a believer into saying that let's remove that exception.
Sean, do you have a?
Can we get a little bit more clarification on your position?
I might just jump in real quick to clarify that this is, this is great conversation, but it's a perfect time for the deliberation portion after the public hearing. Right now, just if you have questions for us about what's written, that would be great, and then save this for deliberation, y'all can go ahead.
That's true.
Yep.
No, I don't have a question on this one.
Clarifying. I have a clarifying question. So I was looking at the exemptions, and I think this gets a little bit to these comments without debating exact rooting, but the reason I would assume that there is not an exemption for me building on my property is because we'd like to get that fee in lieu to go into the, into the pot, right? To add to the potential for affordable housing. Is that, because there's no, the list of exemptions, you know, it's a unit size, it's an internal subdivision of existing structure, garage conversions, rebuild, that kind of thing. It's not owner, property owned by an individual who's building their house. And so the reason for keeping that out is to include those single-family homes being built as part of the potential for funding for the affordable housing, whatever it's called, slush fund. I guess it's not a slush fund, but, or to really encourage the owner to make a small affordable house. Okay. So we'll need to debate that purpose and if that's an appropriate purpose.
If I could add to that, I think, you know, part of it also is trying to get the owner to consider creating forward-compatible designs that could accommodate different life statuses over the life cycle of the structure. One of the things that we hear, have heard a lot about in our visioning and our comp plan work is that people don't have a place to go, they're in this big house, their kids have moved out, but if that house had been built, and you know, it's a good question about what is the city's role, what is government's role, right? And I'm not arguing either way with this, I'm presenting the question. Is that, on the one hand, if the, if the requirements for building that new home when it was built had required that it be built as a primary unit with two accessory dwelling units built into it, and it was then ready to go, that the homeowner could rent out two of the units and live in the primary unit, or rent, live in one of the subordinate units and rent out the other two units, that addresses that comment largely, that someone now has an income stream, that the space is being used efficiently, it presents other living opportunities. So there's that benefit, right? And part of it is, is that the way the building industry is currently operating is on maximum square foot, maximum values, and maximum returns, and unless there is some interruption in that, that the building industry will not automatically start to build those types of units on its own. That is not my argument, that is the argument that I have heard presented in favor of this type of regulation. On the flip side, we are, we have individual people who have saved all their money for years, who've bought a property, are wanting to build a home, and have budgeted a certain amount, which is already an enormous amount of money to build a home, and now are presented with this additional fee to build the home that they want to live in. So there's that side of the argument, too. We're in the policy realm here, we're really trying to find solutions to problems and not create new problems by presenting solutions. However, this is a very challenging topic that the entire region is facing. And many cities are moving to positions where they are trying to influence and interrupt the industry a little bit to try to get builders to build homes that are smaller, homes that are more flexible in their spaces, and forward-compatible with different future life cycle needs, and this is one of the tools in the toolbox to get there.
We probably should move to exhibit seven, and then we'll move to the public hearing. So any, any comments, questions, questions for clarification on removing lot coverage, exhibit seven? So this is primarily language changes, right? I don't have any, anybody else? Okay. So now that we've had a little bit of clarification, we'll move to the public hearing. So I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing comments, three minutes. Who'd like to go first?
I'll go first again.
Thank you, Mr. Eastman.
James Eastman, Eastman, Amish Parkway. So I'm not here to say I told you so with development regs, phase two, but I think there are some unintended consequences. We're not using land efficiently anymore, and that's a fact. Just go look at every permit that has occurred since then. So I'm afraid the same thing might happen with this code, here's why. House Bill 1110 created triple the amount of density for a landowner. And Sammamish is saying, well, there's value in additional density, so this gives us the right to charge a fee to that landowner for the density we created. What we talked about earlier is Bride O'Neill has a density of 17, they're only using 10. It doesn't matter how much density you create, they're not going to go above 10. Like, the market doesn't allow it. I don't think it's because Bride O'Neill's an idiot, or all these developers are idiots, the last six that have gone through, and they're walking away from all this money. I mean, we characterize developers as greedy. What are they seeing that we're not seeing? So the state law says that if you're going to charge someone a fee, it's got to be commensurate with a benefit. So we're claiming there's all this benefit to being able to build more, so we're going to charge you this fee, but the last six or seven permits that have come through here, there's a glass ceiling that's stopping them from utilizing the density that's already available to them today. So to go from 17 to 68, like, no, they're going to stay at 10. If we don't change those reasons that are keeping them at 10, it doesn't matter what happens. So what's keeping them at 10? Tree retention, no mass clearing and grading, stormwater, critical areas. I went back to look at this plat, and it has four Class III wetlands, two onsite, two offsite. And I thought, oh, if I had to rebuild it, how would I do it? I went and looked at the wetland code, and in the hearing packet, it says, "City Council's not going to change wetland code either," as the planning commission. Then I went to look at the Class III wetland buffers, with a category eight, it went from 75 to 300. We quadrupled our wetland buffers in the critical codes area for a Class III wetland. That was news to me. I mean, holy cow. So that affects it. So if I'm the landowner there, and I say, well, now I got this offsite wetland that somebody recorded with a wildlife rating of an eight, and it has a 300-foot radius on my property, and I can't even go look at it to verify it, like, I'm not going to sit there and wait and try to do that, and then go to the public hearing with our hearing examiner, who is so thorough that oftentimes, when you go to him, he'll find something that neither the city or the applicant even bring, and reject it, and adds years to the process. It's like, heck no, I'm not going through that whole process of a subdivision for middle housing, and I'm going to pay this fee on top of that? Like, no, I'm just going to build like even a bigger house and less of them, and even be less efficient with my land. And that's probably what this code's going to do, because of the faulty basis that we're creating all this extra value when everything we built in the last six years says, no, there's no value there. There's a cap, and we've done nothing to remove that cap or take off the changes we implemented in 2019 to encourage middle housing. I want to do middle housing, I think it'd be great, but all the data that I'm looking through, it's like, what do these guys know that I don't? Are they all idiots? I'm not so sure that they are. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Eastman.
Hello, planning commissioners. Paul Stickney, Sammamish. Appreciate clearing up the difference between net and gross. I've been in real estate a long time, so I know the difference in those measurements. It's nice to have that clear. One thing I didn't hear about is, and you don't have to answer me, but I'm going to ask anyway, what in your code is a unconditioned garage? Just an interesting term, and even I haven't heard that one. And then something that I can't recall, so I'm going to ask about it. Are ADUs and DADUs regardless of, oh, no, they have a size limit, so they'd be under 1,500 feet, so there wouldn't be any affordable fee for any ADU, I think, if we look at it that way. Okay, all right. Then I'll skip my comments on the net versus gross. I agree that, in my opinion, as I've said at least a couple times over the last couple years, is most regulation that affects land ultimately boils down to the landowner, as was stated here, here this evening. So it typically isn't a builder that pays it, they, on average, keep their margins the same. So it does come down to a cost to the owner of the land. Now, some would argue that the land value's gone up somewhat, in some cases, that's true too, but still, I think it's just a good thing to know that that's the ultimate payer of things. Not to add issues to the discussion, because there is a lot of potential policy decisions in all this, there's a lot of it. But it is an interesting question that was raised by several people here. Let's say that there's a plateau estates lot, which are good-sized lots, and houses are 1,500 to 2,000 feet. If somebody buys that to build for themselves, they could either add on or tear that house down and build a 4,000-foot house and not pay any fee according to this. What if a builder does that? What if builders come in and do spotlots, it's called, in the industry, and buy that same property? Then do they pay on the 4,000 feet? What if the builder partners with that owner? There's just interesting questions. And on the garage issue, what if somebody builds a couple of cool, unconditioned garages, and a year or two later converts them into units over 1,500 feet? There's just a lot of what-ifs here, and I guess my point is on this, and I won't go too much over here for just a second. Maybe there should be a built-in placeholder in this to take a pretty hard look at all of it after a year and see if there's any changes that need to be made based on actual applications and lessons learned with all these different things that are in play. All right, appreciate the chance to speak, thank you.
And thank you. Next person? Anybody? Y'all okay? We've heard you, your points are very clear earlier. Anybody online?
No hands, please.
Okay. All right. So hearing no more comments, we'll close the public hearing and begin our debate. And I guess the most expedient way to do this is, I'm just going to go through and kind of get like nods if there's any change that we need to discuss about each of the exhibits. And if not, then we'll, we'll kind of group those together, we'll make a motion and move those along. So any change to exhibit one about definitions? We talked a little bit about trees, shrubs, you know, is that important enough to make a change, given how that's used?
You said one?
Well, no, I think we can just leave that up to staff.
You said number one?
Yeah, just exhibit one, if we should make any, okay. So that'll be one that we will make a motion to move along. The final subdivision, so this is with the hearing examiner. Any debate that we need to do further about that? Cool. We're down two. We're on a roll. Maybe I shouldn't speak, but. The next one was about the height measurement. Anything else? All right, three. All right, number four. This was fence and rockery, and my notes included that we might want to change that plantable area. So is that something that we want to have a little quick discussion on? All right, we'll move that to a, to a motion then amendment. Hopefully be pretty straightforward. Okay, state law alignment, so this is that quarter-mile, so those changes? Any further?
There was an amendment that you brought up that you wanted to
This was the walkable, maybe?
Changing the word, include the quarter mile.
The half-mile of walkable distance?
Yeah.
Yeah, you wanted to add that back in, so that would be, I think, an amendment.
Is that, is that an amendment?
That'd be fairly straightforward if we wanted to do that. Okay. So we'll do that as a motion with amendment for that change. Okay. I know we're going to have some conversations about affordable housing, so we will, I won't even ask that question. And then the removing lot coverage, so exhibit seven. Anything else on that one? All right. So by my telly, we've got exhibits one, two, three, and seven that
No, that's six is the one
That's six is affordable housing.
Yeah.
So we're going to have a conversation about that.
Yeah, we're going to have a conversation on six.
Yep. Okay. So entertain a motion to accept those exhibits, recommend those exhibits to City Council.
So moved? Seconded.
Somebody should make that motion. I was suggesting that somebody make the motion.
Okay. So one, two, three, seven, right? Yeah, I'd like to make the motion to move to City Council on one, number one, number two, number three, and number seven.
Okay.
Second.
And second from Saeed. Okay, so any further discussion? Any discussion? All right. So all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None. So that motion passes. Okay, so next, exhibit four. This was the fence and rockery height. So to do this appropriately, we would make a motion to accept, and then somebody else a motion to amend. So, and then we would vote on the amended motion. So first step would be the motion to accept.
So moved?
Or so made.
Second.
Okay. So, and is there any discussion? And for this, I think there would be the discussion about the setback, right?
Yeah.
So, so before we vote, we'll have that brief discussion, make a motion if we decide to include the rooting change. Does that include the rooting change. Does that make sense? I'm following. Okay?
Yeah. Well, DeShawn, you made the changes.
Okay, I propose to make a change instead of plantable, instead of two-feet plantable area, to just call it a two-foot setback.
Okay. And any second for that?
A second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second for that amendment. Any discussion on the amendment?
Just a question to staff. Do you need any clarification on what that might consist of? Or is it clear that it's from the back of the rockery or the back of the...
Yeah, that part would still be retained, I think, so, from the back of the retaining wall, rockery, so.
Yeah, really, it's just changing the wording around the plantable to...
Yep.
And to staff, would that, if you leave it alone, would that possibly create a problem of people using it as storing junk and everything else? Should we make it a little bit clearer, maybe concrete surface or something kind of eliminate that anxiety abuse of that space?
Could say two foot of maintained setback from the back of the retaining wall, that might allow us then to do some form of code enforcement if there's something...
I like that, yeah.
So we'll change the wording on that motion. So move to change to maintained setback. Yeah, okay. Any further discussion? Okay, so first we'll do all in favor of the motion to amend. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so that amendment is passed. And now the motion with the amendment to move that exhibit four, recommend exhibit four to council. And so we had made that motion, so no further discussion?
Move with the amendment?
Yes. So now we have, we're voting on that initial motion with the amended motion that we've just passed. Yeah. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Okay, so we'll move four along now. Number five, that was the state law alignment. So we've got, we're on a roll now, so motion to move it forward. Somebody should make that.
With your amendment?
Yeah.
And then we'll do the adjustment, the amendment to that.
Yeah. So just to be clear, with the amendment of...
Following Robert's rules, we should move first to accept this exhibit five as presented. And then under discussion, we say, no, we'd like to make an amendment. And we'll make a motion on the amendment, pass the amendment, then pass the amended motion.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, Robert's rule, it's just to say, make that change.
My move that we recommend exhibit five state law amendment as drafted to the city council.
Okay.
Second.
And any discussion? Anybody like to make a change to the wording of that exhibit?
Yeah, that's the change that I'd like to make.
The half-mile?
The half-mile, the addition of...
Okay, so we'll have a motion to change. Okay, so...
Add back the one-half mile.
Perfect, yeah.
Sorry, were you going to do that? I don't know who's controlling. So it looks like it was going to be added back.
Oh, I was just highlighting the thing we're talking about, but now it'll be up to one of you to make that amendment, make that motion.
Yeah, and then just to further clarify, so what will happen is that we will mark and I'll sign a letter that goes to council with these, with the things that we've agreed to. And so, you know, I think what we've done in the past is they'll make maybe some very minor changes so that we've got, this is item five of whatever 20 dot oh four dot whatever other numbers are in there, right?
Yep.
So, okay. So that will, we will not delete the one-half mile, is what we're talking about.
Correct, yep. We're following, we're following the amendments.
You was reducing from half amount to quarter.
No, no, my recommendation was that whatever it is, that we just add that quantitative value of...
The value of the staff was quarter reduced.
But they're two different things. So the half-mile that Ajay was referring to was within a walking distance from a facility to a transit stop. And that, when feasible, facilities should be placed within one-half mile walking distance. The quarter-mile is a different, a different thing. Yeah.
Yeah. My thing is that the one-half mile be added in there, which is why when you highlighted it, I thought you were going to do that change.
Oh, yeah. I'll do it on the flip side, and when the council sees it, they'll see the amended and updated version, so.
On the flip side.
On the flip side.
For one half mile.
So we should, we should vote on that change to not to delete the one-half mile walking distance. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So that amendment passes, and now we can vote on the original motion as amendment to recommend to council the modifications, the changes to the code that are shown in exhibit five.
So moved?
Seconded.
Yeah, we've done that. And so now we'll take the vote on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that passes. All right, now, affordable housing.
Yeah.
And I know we're going to have some discussion, but we should make a motion to move this along, and then we'll discuss amendments. So somebody to make a motion.
A move that we recommend exhibit six affordable housing to the city council as presented by staff.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I'll try to be short this time. So I make recommendations to remove completely the 10% penalty, tax, whatever we want to call it, on private citizens building for themselves. I make another recommendation to remove the 1,500 square foot limit, and if we have to set a limit, to be at least 3,000 square feet. A 1,500 square foot is not useful for any single family over 30 years or 20 years. And if the goal is to encourage people to move here and to stay here, 1,500 square feet, people will run out of space very fast. I grew up in probably 1,000 square foot, but that was 50 years ago, or longer than that. In today's world, we know society needs more than 1,500 square feet. And to try to build profit for the future for all those who will come after us and after the ones after us, I think it's unfair to the one who's paying the bill today. It's, and again, that's just me here talking. I'm building it for what suits my family. It's not for those who are going to come after us. It's, it's a very sensitive subject, and I don't want to be cruel or mean, but at the same time, I care more about the people who live here today than the people who will move here in the future. There are better ways to provide affordable housing, in my opinion. And in my opinion, we're just making building homes more expensive. We are doing the complete opposite to what we are intending to do.
Let me just to clarify. I understand the point you're making overall. And you're referring to this across the whole affordable housing, because as I understand it, there's portions of this that are really targeted, I think, in attempt to builders and subdivisions and so forth. And it also kind of pulls in, if you will, the individual property owner, like the speaker earlier. And in my mind, those are sort of potentially two different scenarios that might be handled differently. So my, just to clarify in terms of, you know, where you're coming from, do you take that for both of those scenarios or the individuals?
I honestly take it for both, but I'm more concerned about the individuals.
Makes sense. Okay.
The price of the new homes sets the price of the existing homes. If the builders today increase the cost or the price of buying a new house, realtors will increase the price of existing homes. So I cannot pretend that one will not affect the other. It's one market. And nowadays, people are going through enough, from tariffs to tax on utilities to a lot of different things. We cannot just add more. I mean, none of us, our paychecks are increased every year by the increases that are in the market. And it's just not right for us to charge someone an additional 10%. And I don't want to say because we want to pay, we want to make housing affordable to someone else. The way we're trying to make it affordable to that someone else will not work this way. And again, we talked about this in the past. It's just not going to work that way. We need to think about it differently. We need to build apartments that are subsidized, and we need to come up with someone who will subsidize that cost. But thinking that single-family homes in an area like this, taking 10% from people will make them affordable, it won't. And it's not something I like, but this is the reality. This is what we live in. And I wish if there is a way for me to just dial it back, to make it affordable across the board, and I keep going back to the people that I truly want to see them living where they work, nurses, schoolteachers, firefighters, police officers. I want to see them living where they work. I don't want to see them driving one hour. But this is not going to make it affordable.
Okay. So why don't we go around? No, I'll go last. I've got a couple of comments too.
I have two questions, staff, David and Evan. How common is this right now? How often you come across something like this with somebody? How many units or how many applications per year you come across people wanting to add to the existing square footage, rebuilding it?
So for someone doing a, excuse me, a home renovation project where they're also doing an addition. So I think we're currently exempt, that's currently exempt under the current...
Totally exempt.
That's exempt, right. So if you're doing a home addition, it's not, you're not currently put in the category of being, the inclusionary affordable housing fee does not apply.
Question number two. What happens if I have an existing home and I want to remodel, but then part of remodeling may be in the form of ADUs? Would that exemption apply?
Well, the ADUs would be smaller than 1,000 square feet, so just by simple restriction on ADU size, so then it would apply. It would not apply to the ADUs.
And then if this exemption goes through with the way that you're proposing right now, how would that affect the ADUs?
It would, they still wouldn't apply because it would be raising it from 1,000 to 1,000 square feet to 1,500 square feet, or higher if the commission recommends that.
So let's say hypothetically, the existing square footage is 1,000, and I'm adding an ADU of 500. So I'm all exempt?
You would be exempt. You would be exempt up to 1,000 square feet. You would be exempt.
You look at the combination between rebuilding and/or ADUs as long as the total square footage stays the same.
I would say if you were doing in addition to your home, and you were building a detached accessory dwelling in it in the backyard, say, that was 1,000 square feet, you would be exempt, under today's, under the way it's written today.
What happens if I include that as one package? I don't call it...
You'd still be exempt.
So ADUs could be a part of it as long as it meets the minimum square footage requirement?
Yeah, there's basically four ways you could develop your property that apply the inclusionary affordable housing requirement differently, right? There's currently, if you have an existing home and you renovate that home and you carve out units within the home, if you add square footage to the home, you're exempt. And that stems from a policy that comes, it's passed down from the state, it comes down through King County, it comes down to the city of trying to preserve existing housing stock. That is really one of the region's goals, is to retain existing housing stock. So trying to provide that exception for those categories is important in order to achieve that objective. Various reasons for that. The next category is if you were taking a vacant lot and building it traditionally with one new single-family home, and that new single-family home was larger than 1,000 square feet under today's rules, then you would be subjected to the inclusionary affordable housing in lieu fee, which is 34, 45 per square foot, that is measured on the total square footage of the home. Trying to clarify whether that includes a garage or not, it really, you know, that's what we're trying to do here. Then the next way you could build out your home, your property, would be to build a new single-family home and up to two ADUs attached or detached, right? So in that scenario, you could build, say, a 2,000-square-foot home with 2,000-square-foot attached ADUs, and you'd be, I say 2,000, 2,000-square-foot home with two attached ADUs, and you'd be building a 4,000-square-foot structure. So that would give you 4,000 square feet of space. You would be subject to the inclusionary affordable housing fee on 2,000 square feet, because that is not exempt under the 1,000-square-foot exemption. If you were to raise that exemption to 2,000 square feet, then you could build that development without paying the in lieu fee at all. If you were to raise it to, say, 3,000 square feet, then you could build a 3,000-square-foot home and 2,000-square-foot ADUs for a total of 5,000 square feet, and you would not be required to pay the fee. You can see how those configurations, what that's trying to promote is some diversity in how homes are designed. It's, that's really what it's intending to do, is it's trying to drive builders and designers towards providing different types of square footage and space in order to escape the in lieu fee that might be applied, right? Then there, the next category is if you were subdividing your property, let's say, or how about this? Let's say you're building middle housing. So you have an existing vacant lot. You are allowed to build middle housing, 0.5 FAR for one unit, 0.65 for two, 0.8 for three units. Let's say you had a 10,000-square-foot lot in the R4, and you wanted to, it was vacant, and you wanted to build a triplex, which you're allowed to do under Samamish rules, get a building permit and build a triplex. You could build up to 8,000 square foot of space if you followed the 3,000-square-foot footprint and you went up to the 35-foot height limit, and your lot was fairly, let's take out other restrictions that might apply, which are complicated things, but generally, you could easily achieve an 8,000-square-foot building. So you basically would then have a triplex that maybe is a combination of two, a triplex that is a total of 8,000 square feet of volume in that building that could include two 3,000-square-foot units and one 2,000-square-foot unit. In that case, you'd be paying the fee in lieu on all of the units under today's rule, but if you were to change the exemption to 2,000, you'd only be paying it on 6,000. If you were to change the exemption to 3,000, you would not be paying it at all. You could start to see how that exemption really drives the type of product that is now being built. But it's important to note that the middle housing rule would allow you to do that in the first place, which was not on the books in the city's code prior to the passage of these additional regulations. Now, some might argue that there are other restrictions in place that are going to preclude it or diminish it. I'd argue that those had been in place before we even went through development regs phase one. That those stormwater rules that we have have been aggressive since before that time. The critical areas rules we've had have been aggressive. Tree protection was in place before that. So a lot of what you heard tonight in one of the comment, I disagree with largely, and I think that it's a bit being sensationalized for make a point, but I think that you could easily achieve on a R4 10,000-square-foot lot, an 8,000-square-foot building volume in the form of a triplex.
But again, these are kind of hypothetical situation. This is not what DeShawn was talking about, or the gentleman was talking about. It's existing home. It's not a virgin land. So existing home, the person or the homeowner wants to basically keep the existing property, keep the existing structure, but also add... keep the existing structure, but also add more square footage to that. So.
It would be exempt.
That is relatively, well, depends on what is exemption. Is that 1,500 or what?
Well, no, it just exempts, that, that's a new unit. If, if you're not building another unit, it would be exempt. So the way it's written today, all new residential projects are subject to the fee. Existing residential, existing addition. So say you had a, a modest 1,500 square foot home, which believe it or not, there are some of those around, and you wanted to add 1,000 square feet to it, you would not be subject to the fee.
And how about this proposed change?
It doesn't change that.
Then I'm confused and what is?
Wait a second.
So I, I think I can explain because you weren't at the last meeting. So the previous proposal was for a new structure, 1,000 feet or less, 1,000 square feet or less, would be exempt from the fee in lieu. And we recommended changing that from 1,000 square feet to 1,500 square feet at the last meeting. And so that's the new construction that David's talking about. Is that, that's accurate?
New units that are smaller than, it would, it would go up from 1,000 to 1,500. Or possibly higher if the commission recommends it.
And that is the one that you're talking about increasing?
Yeah, I refused to vote to that the last time.
I was not.
Yeah, you were not here, but I refused to vote, yes. I voted no. Another thing, it's the unintended consequences. This 10%, you just raised the property tax for everyone in Semamish by 10%. I would love to see the price of my house continues going up. Some people, it makes them feel good. It makes me feel bad because I know that my property tax will go up. And it means we just taxed a lot of people out of their homes. There are a lot of people that they still live here, that they retired, that they have limited income. They cannot afford that additional 10% on top of what the market is already doing to them.
Yeah. So let's go to Commissioner Hesham's point. That's true. I was, I voted and then now I'm, now I'm really thinking, given all the changes that are coming, economic changes that are coming and all the work that's going on, does this increase the, that, that's 10% for everyone, right?
It's a 10%, so it's not 10% of property value. It is, the, the requirement is that all new units in the city require 10% of the units being built are built at 80% area median income. Now, the easiest way to understand this, and this has been modeled and was presented to the city council as part of the fee setting process back in January, December, January, yeah, of this year. And for anyone watching, all of those meetings are linked and time stamped on our website, on the affordable housing website page within our page. And you can watch all the city council meetings on this topic. And before I answer that question, I want to, I want to pull back just a little bit here because I think it's important to keep in mind, there's, there's sort of the first question is, and this is the one the council has provided direction on by way of policy and the comprehensive plan is, is the premise, the further question is a premise. Are we, are we going to require a citywide inclusionary affordable housing program? The question, the answer to that has been provided by the council. The answer is yes, unless they change the comp plan and change the code to remove that. So moving on, assuming that that premise has been answered, moving to the next question is, is where and how should it apply? And under that, there really are two primary things that, that you, you, you want to ask or answer is, one is what, what are the exemptions, like where doesn't it apply? And that's what we're talking about here is, you know, existing, you know, should we add existing or should we add individual property owners and builders, you know, who are building a home for themselves to the list? I think that's, that's one proposal that has been thrown out there. Another is how big of a home should be exempt from the fee? And that's the 1,000, 1,500, 2,000, 3,000 question. And then there, there are other exemptions that could apply. And we, we have, I think, a decent list there. Units being rebuilt, garage conversions, these are all exemptions, right? For things that should not be, where it should not be applied. There are others where you have ideas that should be added in. I think, you know, this is the time to, to make that recommendation. The, the other, I want to say lever or dial that's out there that the council has considered is if you're building a fractional unit of less than, so if, say you're doing less than 10 units and you end up with a fractional unit, say a four, a four unit, say, say a three, a three-pack triplex and you were, you, you had to pay the fee, well, how much should the fee be is the question? And the council made it clear that they were starting with a 34, 45 per square foot fee. That was what was recommended that came from a model that was delivered by Arch based on a duplex construction in the city compared to an 80% AMI sale versus a market sale. And the difference, if I, I may get this wrong, so don't quote me on the numbers, but the market sale price was 1.2 million and the 80% AMI price was 400,000. So there's about an $800,000 differential between the market price and the 80% AMI price. And the way the in-lufi is designed is to largely distribute that across fractional unit increments. So if you were to do, it doesn't always add up exactly, so we're not going to say that it does, but it's a pretty close conclusion. If you were to do 10 units at, at a certain amount of square footage, a market square footage of what a, what an anticipated townhome would be versus building one 80% AMI unit and, and taking an $800,000 loss, if you will. I'm just trying to say it how it is. So that, that, that's where that math comes from. The council did consider under the fee whether or not there should be the concept of a market factor or a catalyst applied, which would modify the fee and turn the dial down. So 34, 45 is what the, the math is saying is where the inclusionary affordable in-lufi should be based on that model. Well, is that right for the city from a policy perspective? Or should we turn the dial back and apply a market factor because we don't want to stall new home starts or new home construction? Or we don't want to cause an inappropriate burden on builders who are trying to build homes or individuals who are trying to build homes? And they had a very serious conversation about that. And they identified that they would start at 34, 45 and they directed staff to come back and report out on trends that we're seeing. And we are, we have to do that anyway for the State Department of Commerce. So we're going to be doing that also with the council. And the council would then revisit and reconsider the in-lufi at a later date and determine whether a catalyst or a market adjustment should be, a market factor should be applied to the fee. So the council started in a precautionary tone with a certain amount, understanding that, that this could impact building in the city. And, but at the same time, we also are in the middle of a, a bit of a housing crisis trying to find a way to provide housing. And, and I understand there's different perspectives in, on how that is achieved. But that is, I wanted to make sure you understood the other side to this, that there is that other dial or lever that's available to the council. Should they choose to, if, if we were to make these changes and say we landed on 2,200 square feet of exemption for a new unit and say we, we landed on exempting individual property owners that are building their own home? And that was a recommendation. In those instances where it would still apply to a production builder or to somebody who is building a development that doesn't fit within these exemptions, there still is that down the line continued monitoring where the council would have that opportunity to turn the dial back and reduce the fee. You know, say, say they landed at, maybe they come back at $10 a square foot and that's their, their, their way to try and make that adjustment to respond to other economic factors, other drivers that are out there related to housing starts. That was a lot, I'm sorry, but I wanted to try and explain that other parameter that is under, constantly under consideration by the council.
We should extend the meeting?
Yeah, I would propose.
About 30 minutes maybe.
I would demand, I'm sorry. I would propose extending the meeting by 30 minutes.
To nine o'clock?
Second.
Okay. All in favor extending to nine?
Aye.
Aye.
David, that was, there were some very helpful comments there. And one is it's helpful to remind us that we've actually been directed by council and it's written in code to have this affordable housing, right? I forget what the exact title is for this section, but mandatory affordable housing. So our focus really is on modifications, right? And just like you mentioned, you know, there's a few things that we have some potential levers on if we choose. And it's the size of the exemption, property, individual property owners, those sorts of things. So we need to focus our discussions on that. And recognize that the text says this is one method for providing affordable housing. It's, it's frankly, in my opinion, a very blunt force and does have some unintended consequences to potentially increase the prices of houses and make in general less affordable. And I have seen or heard discussions, I may have this mixed up, you know, it was relatively recently, that either Seattle or King County was looking at a significant bond, like a billion-dollar bond levy to substantially change the game and being able to help pay for affordable housing. And that just brings it all to the surface. You know, voters will say, we want affordable housing, we're going to support this levy as opposed to numbers that basically kind of get hidden. So that's philosophical and I felt like saying that so council could hear and understand that the, these are the things that we're wrestling with after hearing lots of feedback from the community. Having said that, I think we do need to focus on, on the things that we can recommend for changes. John, we haven't heard from you. Is there some additional comments you need? And then we'll start to tie this together and wrap it up.
Okay. Incredibly complicated. First I'll say the city doesn't build houses. That's been drummed into us. So there's limited mechanisms to meet the state's requirements for providing the housing types that were put upon us. You know, in the middle housing, unit lot development, that is a mechanism. But still the, the requirements, and we've seen the analysis for March about how it can work with either apartments or single-family developments, townhouses, whatever, where the developer is willing to set aside 10%. So it kind of boils down to, I think, Evan, if you could put the slide back up, we're talking about, what, where those boundaries are around the exceptions? Because I think the, the council's already set in policy the 10%, give or take. So we're kind of nibbling around the edges, particularly since, what, 75, 80% of our development is subdivisions built by obviously developers. So what, what's the reasonable size to start an exemption? We already know that ADUs are exempt, that additions are exempt, to rebuild as a result of a natural disaster is exempt. And I think David alluded to even more. So coming at this from exactly the opposite direction Hesham is, is where do we set that lower limit? And we talked about this extensively at our last meeting and raised it from 1,000 to 1,500, some of it based on feedback from master builders or developers. So for the developer, it seems they're in step with the 10% and paying the in-lufi if they need to. So it comes back to very narrow, kind of small bucket. And perhaps a compromise would be for an owner builder, and again, we've got all sorts of issues around how you define that, that the first 1,500 square feet of that new house is exempt. But if they want 3,000, then they're going to pay in lieu fee on that 1,500 above and beyond the 1,500. So gives some relief, but also, and some incentive, but also recognizes that we're in a tight spot. We need moderate and low-income housing and we don't have very good tools to get there. So that would be my proposal.
Can, can I comment on that?
Absolutely.
The, the Arch model? Because all what we're talking about here, it's the Arch model. It's nothing, it has nothing to do with the state requirement. The state requirement to provide affordable housing, we already approved that in the comprehensive plan. The middle housing, we already approved that in the comprehensive plan. And I believe that the middle housing will provide affordable housing because it's the right size and it will provide affordable housing. The Arch model is designed for cities different than Semamish. It's designed for cities where houses are not priced in an insane way like they are in Semamish. And that's why I keep going back to that. This model will not work here. I think 15 exempt and 15 not exempt, I think that's what we are, that what's proposed here. Because it's proposed that basically 1,500 is exempt, anything above 15, you pay tax. So is that correct or am I reading it wrong?
So this would, sorry. This would be, the way it's currently written, the way it is currently in code today is any unit that is 1,000 square feet or smaller unit is exempt.
1,500.
The way it's written in code today, yeah. And we're proposing to change that to 1,500, the way that's written now and subject to you all adjusting it how you see fit. However, what, what it doesn't say is the first 1,500 square feet. It is, so, so for example, under this scenario where it's 1,500 drafted here, if you were building a 3,000 square foot house, you'd pay it on all 3,000 square feet, right? And there's different approaches. And what I heard is that, you know, there's, maybe there's an opportunity for individual homeowners who are building it that maybe they, they get a, the first 2,000 square feet is, is exempt. Then anything above that, they pay the fee on. So if you're building a 4,000 square foot house, then you paid it on 2,000 square feet. But that for production builders, that, and all other units built that aren't in an individual building a home, well, then you would use this exemption, which is any unit that is smaller than, you insert the number, is exempt. And you could create those two different categories. So I think the first question is, would you want to create those categories? And then the second question is, where would you want to set the dial and, and what notch? You know, 1,500, 2,000, what, you know, how, how would you set that? So I'll pass it back to you, but you know, I, I, we, I, I understand what you're trying to achieve and we could administer that. So my, my, my task is taking what you all recommended to the council and making sure we could actually administer it. And then whatever the council ends up landing on, that we could actually administer it. That's what, what my role is.
And it can be thankless at times, I'm sure. John, did you have anything else to, to add about?
Also in previous presentations, if I remember correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, almost all of our surrounding cities are doing some form of in-lufi program for moderate and low-income housing.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't have a list of them. However, my understanding is a majority of Arch cities, which is, most of the cities around us are moving that way. They're all applying it in a little bit of a different manner. Many of those cities have higher density areas where it's easier to achieve that than through individual, single-family. However, they are all applying it on some level, as far as I'm aware, to, to single-family as well.
And they started way back then, when houses were affordable. They are not starting that today, when, that makes a big difference. When houses were selling for two hundred thousand dollars, it was a completely different world.
Anything else? So we're going to wrap this up. Here's what I think we should do, is, as I see it, there's probably two, could be more, but at least two things that we should focus on. And the first is whether there should be a exemption totally for owner-builder, or some formula that's the first two thousand or twenty-five hundred square feet or fifteen hundred exemption. If somebody wants to build, you know, three thousand, then the fifteen hundred above the specified fifteen hundred, if we change that, would apply. So I think we should work that first, see if we want that exclusion, or maybe the other way around, is that, oh, actually, I'm sorry, it's been a long day. John, you said something that, I went back because I wasn't here on the meeting when this was discussed, and I must have missed that fifteen hundred that the builders said that they were okay with. Could you just summarize briefly about?
So.
I'm sure they don't want anything, but if.
So we, in meeting with several builders, they identified that, you know, they would prefer on any day to take a fee over building a unit. That's generally the sentiment I hear from builders, because it's predictable and they could pay the fee and walk away from it and not have to deal with it. However, there was concern about the exemption levels and how it would impact middle housing and whether it would result in a disincentive for people to actually pursue middle housing and smaller, for the smaller builders. So one of the smaller builders I met with raised an objection to the thousand square feet because, well, first of all, didn't really, you know, didn't agree with the program overall. I want to be clear, that builder wasn't, you know, coming in saying, oh, I love this program, I, I'm happy to do it. But did say that he understood what we were trying to achieve and that this is something that's becoming more common, but he was trying to find a way for it to pencil, because at the end of the day, if that's what we wanted to do as a city, he was fine with it. He just wanted to know that his project would pencil or not. So he indicated that he could achieve a two-bedroom unit in a thousand square foot, or he could achieve, excuse me, a two-bedroom plus a flex space, an office space, or a rec room or something, in a fifteen hundred square feet, or he could achieve a three-bedroom in a fifteen hundred square feet. And he saw that as, if we were trying to build Semamish family-style housing in middle housing, like a triplex or something, that he would absolutely see fifteen hundred as the minimum size that he would be trying to build. And he felt that if he was given an exemption from paying the in-luck fee because he was trying to achieve an affordable family unit based on square footage and trim, that he would, that he would walk from this. And that is the product he's been trying to find a way to build. He has been building them in other parts of the region, but would love to build them in Semamish if the exemption was right. He also had some really good ideas about trying to build them out at a finish level that would allow homeowners to, over time, sweat equity, finish them. So, you know, working within what the building code requires, and it's a model that some other countries have. We've heard about these developments where you could actually get a wormshell with a minimal finish on the inside and buy that and then build it out yourself over time. So, so to answer your question, the fifteen hundred square feet was, what he saw was the minimum exemption that would be needed for him to be able to start moving forward with projects in the city.
Okay. And what that would do, and this is kind of for me, we want to set that square footage exemption level where it would actually encourage building at that level, because it'd be smaller units that would be more affordable. And I think at least a lot of the conversation has been, well, the penalty when you go above that. And so, like, hearing that one builder has some ideas where that fifteen hundred square feet works as a minimum is encouraging. I do wonder, frankly, and I didn't want to relitigate this stuff that had been done back before, but as I've thought through this stuff, it felt like, oh, at least a little bit more might encourage more of that, you know, small houses to actually be built, as opposed to, well, I'll just take the hit on the fee and build something big, if that makes sense. So could we motivate more building of seventeen hundred, two thousand square feet units that would be more affordable than the three thousand square foot stuff that's going in? And I don't know the answer for that. But if we'd like to change something, that's, that's kind of the rationale that I would have, is if we would want to move that up a little bit or keep it as is, because of the feedback that occurred back, what, a month ago? So.
Can I propose something, yes, a little bit different approach?
Sure, yeah.
What would happen, because all this, what we're hearing is builders and assuming that the builder will come over and take over and purchase property, and they wanted to kind of add to it. Can we actually create two different groups? One is that the home, the existing homeowners basically tie the exemptions to the ownership. If the owner wants to build that, would be exempt. And then the question is that, what would be exemption? But if the developer purchased that property, then the exemptions would be higher or lower.
Actually, I think that's, well, not I think, that is where I was heading to. I had mentioned doing the two, and at first I thought, well, should we talk about exempting the homeowner?
Well, that would address the concern that we heard from.
Exactly, exactly. And then I thought, well, if, if there's going to be some discussion about, maybe there's some portion that's exempt, if you want to build a three thousand square foot home on your property.
As long as you, you're the owner of that property.
Right, right.
But if you sell that property, then you miss that exemption.
It gets all complicated then, but maybe. So actually, I was, I was heading in the same direction, I think you were separating those two. What I thought would be a little bit cleaner is if we just decide, do we want to maintain that, actually, accept the fifteen hundred square foot modification from what the code had been for the exemption for unit size? Or move that to something greater than fifteen hundred? I think clearly we don't want to keep it at a thousand, so there's a proposal in the rewrite to move to fifteen hundred. Are we okay with that? Would we want to move that higher?
Sean, would you, would you agree with that?
So I have a quick comment on that. I would support the fifteen hundred, and then in the second part, where we might have further exemptions.
Right.
So, you know, you're a single family, building your own house, and you want to go to seventeen hundred square feet, well, you only pay the in-luck fee on the extra two hundred or so, you know? So that we're kind of, I don't want to say splitting the middle, but we're trying to meet the city's goals around housing and provide more flexibility for the homeowner 1100 builder.
Well, we'll talk about that one.
Yeah.
But that's great, yeah.
But that's why.
It's one way to do that.
The city's goals were met through the comprehensive plan. Those were met.
The state requirements were met through the comp plan. But I think council has given us policy direction.
This is an arch recommendation. This is, that the city is asking us, is it good or is it not good? And if it's not good, why?
So I can, I can think back to sometime in 2023, when I first started hearing from council members, when are we going to talk about a citywide inclusionary affordable housing program that requires all new development, including single-family homes participates in some form of affordable housing? So while it is definitely rooted in Arch, I believe, and a lot of the background comes from Arch and those conversations, the city council majority has had interest in the city pursuing a citywide inclusionary affordable housing program above and beyond what our state mandate is and our compliance is with state rule, in order to try to go above and beyond and to try to find a way to start to grow a affordable housing program. And they see that by way of new development, providing units or funding that could be used in lieu of units to be partnered or pooled off-site in different locations. So that's where that comes from.
If I play the numbers game, and I say, how many single-family homes were built? Let's say, if we look five years ago, how many single-family homes were built? And if we apply this ten percent rule to those, and see how much funds could we have collected from those? And accordingly, how many subsidized homes could we have provided? And will it fill the delta? Because the delta you mentioned earlier, between four hundred and a million-two, that's huge. If we collect ten percent from everyone who's going to build anything, forget about a thousand, five hundred square feet, how much money are we achieving? Will it allow us to achieve our goal of providing affordable housing?
Maybe one home. Maybe one home.
Exactly. Maybe one house. Maybe we will do one house, but the damage that we will do will be citywide. And this is where, where I'm concerned, that unintended consequences are worse than what we are trying to achieve. And I know we only have ten more minutes. I feel we need to set this topic aside, and we come back, and we talk about options, and we talk about numbers, and we weigh the benefits, if there are real benefits, before we move it forward.
Yeah, I'm wondering, because this is not clean. I recall in the past that we have, I don't know if it's a dissenting opinion or something like that in the letter that goes to council, but a clear statement. And we had worked the wording and shared it, you know, by email, that says that after our debate, the, and we could, we could vote on this to see if where we're really at, but there definitely is a tone here among all of us, that this is, this is very burdensome on the community, and there are the potential for unintended consequences that will actually be negative in terms of achieving our goals. And we could work the wording to basically state that and share that thinking with the council. And I know a number of the council members watch these, and so they would, they would be encouraged to, you know, listen to the conversations. And that, that gives us a little bit of an out, if you will, and to make our, you know, thinking known. I do have to come back to saying, you know, that this, the code has been approved, and we're talking about some modifications to the approved code, one of which is to change the exemption on floor area from a thousand to fifteen hundred square feet. And where that came from was some recommendations from builders in the discussion back in the beginning of March, right? And so we should decide whether we want to accept that modification or modify it. And if we were to modify it, the conversation has been to increase that from fifteen hundred to some number.
Chairman, can I ask you a question? Is there an urgency on this, to finalize this at this meeting, or can be?
It, it's in place in the code currently, and applications that come in the door vest to it. So we want to try to make that adjustment that we see now. If the, if the commission, you know, the one option is to simply vote on what's in front of you. And if you decline to change it, we will bring that to council, and the council can move forward and do what they want with it. On the, on the other hand, if you wanted to add some recommendations for things that you might want to see included in it, we could bring that to council, and then they can do what they want with that. We could also include the, the alternative perspectives in the memo that goes to the council on this. So those generally seem to be the options, is vote on what is queued up here on the screen or could be on the screen and in the agenda packet. And if you chose to not support that, then we would not change it. And if you wanted to amend it and vote on that, then we would, and you supported those amendments, we would take those. And if you wanted to take either of those actions and add, and wanted us to add an alternative perspective component to that recommendation, we would, we would do that as well. But what I don't think is in the cards is not taking action, because not taking action, we would find in the, in the negative that you are voting to decline making these changes, and we would take that to the council accordingly.
Let me make a suggestion, Mr. Chairman. What would happen if you go with the approving and supporting all the exhibits that we talked about when we voted on it with the exception of six, and then bring it back at a certain time and discuss it further?
Well, if we don't, then six would retain the one thousand square foot exemption, not fifteen hundred. And it would retain, would not allow exclusion for units being rebuilt. So it's, it's actually worse, if you will. And that, that's the current code that people are looking at and trying to make decisions from.
So I'd like to make a motion to move this along to vote and discussion, and there's going to be disagreement with this. So I move that we accept the proposed changes as presented by staff, include a note to council that we couldn't, we discussed further exemptions, particularly for single-family home, home and property owners building their own home, but did not arrive at a recommended exemption level. So that would change the, that would be my motion, that would change the code so you can get the fifteen hundred in right away, and then work on the other exemption.
So that's a motion. Is there a second?
Second for discussion or second for vote?
Well, second will always have discussion, so. Second would indicate that you, you're willing to have that conversation. If we don't, if nobody seconds, the motion will die.
Can you go over, John, can you go over with the exception of what? That how would we bring it back? How would give the message to the council that there was no hundred percent agreement on it, and we wanted to have more time to discuss it and bring that on a separate item?
Well, that would be embedded, that would be embedded in the motion that we couldn't reach a.
Consensus.
We didn't have time to reach a consensus on what the exception for single-family building their own single-family home would be, or how that would look. But it was discussed and considered, and that could be written up in the letter.
I will say, from a calendar perspective, the next time we could get this topic back in front of you will probably be September.
Wow.
That's okay. But I would like, in the letter, to say that we're not accepting the ten percent, not just for the single-family homes across the board. Because again, I go to, back to my point, you increase the price of the new houses, you are increasing the prices of the existing ones, no matter what. You increase those prices, you're increasing the taxes. You are taxing people out of their homes.
It's, but the code's already there.
I understand. I'm just, I'm just saying it loud and clear.
Yeah.
But how could, how could, one of the member of the planning commission's position should be reflected in the letter so the council is aware that we discussed this, even though that there is not hundred percent agreement?
Yeah, yeah, we could, would absolutely do that.
Do you see any problem?
And we would, we would circle that around. I, you know, let me, so to follow Robert's rules, if we have a second to your motion, we'll discuss that motion. If not, it dies, and we can make another motion. So is there a second? Hmm, okay. So that, we'll need to try another motion or another suggestion. There actually was a motion to accept all of. There actually was a motion to accept all of this as written and we were discussing amendments.
So I have a motion to extend our meeting by 30 minutes.
Oh.
I second.
Okay, that one gets seconded. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I have a, if I might. I think there seems to be a head nod that the exemptions we're looking at tonight of at least increasing to 1,500 square feet is better than 1,000 and exempting homes being rebuilt is better than not, that we should at the very least potentially recommend as a commission to move those forward. And we could also, in the letter, create a section that the planning commission recommends further opportunity in the future to consider further exemptions to this chapter and bring those recommendations back to the council at a later date. We don't have to determine, determine the date right now, but if we don't take action to move these forward, the existing, what we all seem to agree are worst, worst conditions will stay in place. And I'll also just add a reminder that the council didn't ask the commission to consider if the 10% affordability requirement is appropriate. That's not what they asked to look at. They asked for a review of the exemptions. So just as a reminder of kind of setting the bounds on the conversation and what they're looking for input on, it's the exemptions, so.
So the door is closed as far as discussion on the 10%. It's out of here?
It's in, it's in the code, yeah.
Which is supported by policy statements in the comprehensive plan, which the council just, you know, approved. I mean, I can picture council member Lamb explicitly asking for the policy statement for inclusionary zoning in November. So correct, that, that door is sort of shut. We're looking at exemptions.
Evan, that's, I think that's really well stated. I would be interested in having a short discussion and then whether we want to make this as an amendment to the modifications or not, is the adding an exclusion for the property owner builder. And my basis for that is some of the comments that we heard tonight and sort of a small sample set of a few people that I talked to that said, hey, if I've got a piece of property and I'm building on it, this is so unfair to be basically, you know, paying into the fee in lieu. Nobody was like, you know, hey, that sounds like a good idea. Now, obviously, it would be money coming out of their pocket. But the rationale was, it's my property. And David, you've mentioned many times about, you know, sort of the ownership of property is really important. It's sacrosanct, you know, that people have their property. And so for me, as I've gone through this, I would wholeheartedly vote for a motion that accepts the code modifications that are shown here, the 1,500, the units being built, adding the cottages. I also would like to see if we can have a motion to amend it, to exclude owner, however we would phrase that, you know, owner, owned property, builder, owner, whatever the right phrasing would be. It just, it just, you know, it's quite a burden on folks and limits, you know, their rights around property, so.
But how would you?
I do think that those will on the margin add to the fee. It's, it's not going to like make or break whether we can build affordable housing or not. So anyways, so if somebody had like, if that makes sense, I'd entertain a motion to amend the exemptions to add the individual property owner builder.
By the way, my, it's 9:03.
We did extend, yeah, yeah, till 9:30. That was, that was a successful motion. We just had a few moments.
Got it. So I second your motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So, so there was a motion to add an exemption for the owner builder. Does that make sense? And you, we could work on the exact phrasing, but that's, that's the intent that we have here. Any discussion on that motion?
Yes. Can we amend it to increase the size to 3,000 and request that we come back and have further discussions?
That would be, actually, that's a separate issue. So that there was one.
Stay with the 3,000s.
If you, well, no, if you look at the, the list of exemptions, there is one that has that 1,500, changed from 1,000 to 1,500. There's another one that's the internal subdivision. There's another one, garage conversions. I'm suggesting adding yet another one that talks about exempting the property owner who's going to build on their property.
Period regardless of the size?
Yes.
And there was another one that John suggested that.
With, with some sort of compromise. I'm not suggesting that. If you own the property and you're building on your property, I'm saying you would be exempt from the fee in lieu. That's, that's my motion.
Okay, I'm, I'm good with that.
I thought you would be. So.
There's already three, three votes, one, two, three?
Well, we, I said it was, so we had some discussion. Any other discussion on that?
No, I think, I think we could go there.
Okay. So for that amendment to add an additional exemption for the property owner builder, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? None opposed? So that amendment goes. And we have gone around and around on the 1,500. We will put into the letter that we think there needs to be some further analysis really on the impacts of the square footage level of exclusion. And we need, frankly, for me to know whether it's 1,500 or 3,000, I could only use gut feel. I think, you know, Hashem, you're talking about what the impact would be and what would the analysis. I'd love to see that. You know, it could be very meaningful. So what we had originally was to accept the changes. So that was the 1,500, that was the units being built, you know, the ones that are shown here in whatever, section four exemptions, whatever it is. And we've made an amendment to that to add an exemption for the property owner. So for that original motion as amended, any further discussion?
Or amendments?
Oh, yeah, yeah. And remembering that we will have a note about the, that the city council should sit and watch the hour-long discussion.
So let's get, let's get clarification between two amendments, two motions. Motion number one basically support the staff's recommendation as it is written and discussed. That's motion number one, which is called, you call it original.
Right.
The amended motion, Mr. Chairman, that's what you proposed and you got the not support of three.
Yep.
Which, which makes it not only support the supposition, but, but the owner occupied increase in the square footage would be exempt.
Yeah. Can you bring up the, just to be absolutely clear?
Owner occupied increasing the square footage or an owner building new? I'm talking about building new.
Well, there's other.
This only applies to new. Yep. So you're, what you're saying.
I'm doing anything for myself. I'm not paying a tax.
Any size.
Any size.
Wait, wait a minute. What is definition of new? If I'm adding, if I'm adding, that is not a new.
New housing unit, new, new residential.
Again, I have a thousand square foot, I'm adding 500 to it. Is that a new?
You're expanding, you're expanding an existing unit. You're not adding a new unit. So we're talking for new units only. Yep.
So in that example that the chairman sits in the audience and he's talking about an existing home, he adds, so under this proposal, he would not have to pay any fees.
Correct, if he's adding, and I, I think there was some.
That is the amendment motion.
It's already in the code that way.
Yeah, that's how it already exists. And I think there was a public commenter who was saying they wanted to build a new housing unit on their family's property. So under the chair's new exemption, he would be exempt from paying the fee.
Another add, if someone who has a big family like him, who needs more than 3,000 square feet, will he be taxed for anything?
Well, let's take a look at the exemptions here. So what I, what we amended, agreed to in that amendment is that there would be an additional exemption. So we've got the, the 1,500 as an exemption below that, the internal subdivision of existing structure, blah, blah, blah. There would be an additional one, so it'd be item F, right, that would talk about the property owner who's building new. Okay? So that's what we've passed. And then the original motion basically said, we would accept the stuff that's in red here, the red lines.
Yes.
As per recommendation from staff. We've amended that to add section F.
Yeah.
Right? So now what we're proposing is to vote on that original motion that said, these are good with the amendment. And we would include in our letter to council that we debated and have concerns about the 1,500 square foot level for the exemptions. And we have concerns about basically the whole fee in lieu structure for encouraging affordable housing. While we very much agree on the need for affordable housing, we would have, you know, wording like that, and I could work on that.
Would it be possible to put a deadline sort of, sort of saying, okay, this item will come back to us in September, right, and make it as a wish list?
I mean, the most you can do is recommend the council allow you that opportunity and then they decide if they want to do that. So we'll see what they say based on.
The language is there that we would like to bring this one back.
They could, they could see the changes and say, no, this is good. We like it how it is and thank you for your recommendation, but we'll see.
Yeah, okay. All right, so we've had a lot of conversation. I'm ready to ask for a vote. So all in favor of that original motion as amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? No. Okay, so that passes. And we'll work on a letter.
Yes.
Okay. What else?
That's it. I think that's it.
We've got a calendar coming up, so we've got a.
You know, and I don't have it open at the top of my, in my, in my head at 9/11, so check it out online.
Yes, we, the meetings are back to their normal cadence, yeah. All right.
There is a proposed meeting on August 7th.
All right, so the next thing is to ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, yes.
Hey, we finished 20 minutes earlier.
There's one way to look at it. I'm currently going through this very battle. I have two and a half acres in a very nice neighborhood and I'm like, do I build big houses that match everyone around me and make everyone happy or can I be the poster? ... such as new paths and trails. Town center helps Sumamish create walkable neighborhoods. And finally, a vibrant town center serves as the city's front porch and connects the city. Next slide. So we wanted to talk a little bit about what is not proposed to change. I think this is really important for everyone to understand that the scope of this project is really quite limited. We're not proposing to change.